We want. We are calling the special meeting of the Cedar Springs City Council to order at 6:31. If you would like to rise and say the pledge with me, I would greatly appreciate it. I pledge allegiance to the flag. And to the states of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God. The Constitution of the Constitution. With that, I will call the roll. Ms. Atchison.
Here.
Mr. Gross.
Here.
Ms. Hamel.
Uh, present.
Ms. Nixon.
Here.
Ms. Powell.
Here.
Ms. Race.
Here.
And Mayor Conley is here. At this time, we'll move on to public comments. The council welcomes and encourages the public to speak during the public comment and public hearing portions of the agenda. However, council policy is to hear the public comment, not to act on the public comment at this time. Concerns brought before the council during the public comment portion of the agenda will be referred to the city manager for action. If after communicating with the city manager, no resolution is reached, the concern will be elevated to the mayor and then eventually to the council for action. Those citizens wishing to speak on agenda and non-agenda items will be allowed a maximum of four minutes each to address their concerns. This is the only time during the council meeting that citizens are allowed to address the council. If you would like us to respond, you need to state your name and give an address to the city manager. We are recorded on Zoom, so and we're also recorded for YouTube, so we are not saying that you need to do that to put that on YouTube. We're not looking to to dox anyone, but if you want written responses, you need to provide it to the manager. And with that, we have a public comment. I have my stopwatch.
My name is Louise King. I live at 186 East Ash Street, and I have been a resident here in Cedar Springs for almost 50 years, same address. Um, and I appreciate you are public servants who serve by providing for our communities wants and needs. Mrs. Vu, a retired business owner loves our library. And I am very distressed that our city manager can send one of our library board members a message that she is being removed from her service because of misfeasance, which occurs when an act is intentional. Miss, that's malfeasance, I'm sorry, misfeasance, which is completely accidental or non-feasance, which is failure to act when action is required. This is charged on the surface because she did not attend a board meeting that she was told was canceled on a day when most of the county activities were canceled. Later, that meeting was called by the vice press, but not everyone got that message. Mr. Womack also states that Mrs. Vu did not attend the finance committee meeting. No mention on when that meeting was supposed to happen, but that's not true. She has attended finance meetings with the finance committee who consists of Mr. Elick and Charlie Hibbert. Did either of those members suggest that Mary Evelyn didn't attend the meeting? No, these are trumped up charges. Also, he states that she supports certain actions of a minority of the library board that bring ill repute on and weaken the board. The only reason why there may be a minority is that the city has been replacing board members with specifically chosen individuals that do not represent the residents of the city, but only the wants of the mayor and the manager. In the last few years, the library board has surveyed the community as well as conducted focus groups. And that's to determine how to best serve our community. The board's strategic plan addresses these results and has been part of the director's report each month, at least before I retired from the board last year. It appears that the city manager and mayor may have carrier motives for trying to push through changing the operation of our library in just a few weeks from locally directed by the board to a KDL branch. Why are we not looking at what is best for the community and seeking what is desired by asking them yet again? And coming up with a viable plan of action instead of pushing through a merger that may not be in the best interest of our patrons? Why does Algoma want out? Why have other area communities explored leaving KDL as well? Maybe we should be looking a little closer to what might be the underlying desire of just a few. Why is it so important to change what is working and working well? Is that really what's best for our community and what we want? Let's leave Mrs. Vu on the board and maybe vet new volunteers a little more closely. Do they use the library and are they qualified in any way? Thank you.
Next. Anyone else?
Adam, Eric.
We're good. Yep, I'm waiting.
Evening, my name is Ross Leesman. I'm the Solon Township Attorney, and I'm addressing you on behalf of the Solon Township Board. Cedar Springs began operating an independent library in 1936 and began partnering with Solon Township in 1984. That's 38 years ago. So for 38 years, the township and the city have been working together on this library. And KDL was established to take over the county library in 1994. The city and the township decided to remain independent together. That's 38 years. That's not a couple of weeks or a couple of months or six months or two years. It seems like everything that the city and the township have worked at for a long time are being replaced by short-term memories. My understanding is that the new library building was constructed with private funds. Those are private funds raised from people in Cedar Springs City, but also Solon Township residents. Those are private donations from Solon Township residents. There's talk about millages. Millages are not levied on population. Millages are levied on taxable values. And so what you need to look at is what are, what is each community contributing for the operating costs? And this I took from the city manager's memo. This might be a little off, but according to that, the city pays 109,000 and Solon pays $83,000 a year to fund the library. That means, and that might need a slight adjustment, that Solon is paying 43% of the operations of the library for a library that's located in the city and that people walk to in the city. That's not such an unfair allocation of resources. At least the folks thought it was fair when they built the library and when they set up the library board, which the city also has a majority of the members on. Now there's a rush to tear that apart, to renege on the deals that were made when the city and the township and the residents and the private community came together to build the library. I've read your lease between the city and the library board, and I've read your proposed agreement with KDL, and I would encourage each one of you to read that carefully yourselves, because right now your lease of the library board, the library board pays all of the expenses. It's a triple net, a carefree lease, it's called, where the library board pays for maintenance, it pays for snow plowing, it pays for heat, it pays for insurance. KDL doesn't pay any of that. I'm not here to bash KDL. They're a nice organization, but I can tell you, I know what I'm talking about. They're expensive, and you're going to get all those additional expenses that you'll pay out of your general fund. I'd also like to remind you that the library board is a separate public agency. It's not a department of the city or of the township. And under the City, Village and Township Library Act that set up the joint board to remove a library board member requires cause. And I think that's why probably your city manager put in your notice, it has to be malfeasance, misfeasance, or non-feasance. That means a bad act. Malfeasance, cause is not disagreeing with a public policy decision of an elected official or of a staff member of either the city or of Solon Township. So I'd encourage you, when you're doing your duty today, to consider that. Is this a bad act that will cause you to remove a library board member who's lawfully appointed and whose best interest is to serve the library board? If not, you're not only violating state law, you're breaching your contract with Solon Township and with the folks who set up this library. Thank you.
Is there anyone else?
I just mainly have a question that was brought up at the forum. Required by law. The question was asked about whether the board or the city had authority over negotiations between other libraries like KDL, Algoma, or any other entity. And I don't believe we've ever gotten an answer. Well, this was a question for the city manager.
You have three minutes if there's anything else. Hello, Donna.
Well, I always remind myself, but my name's Donna Clark, and I live in the city on Grant Street. Is that good enough?
You don't have to give an address.
I always remind myself when anything, you know, comes up that we are trying, as a community, that we're just trying to deal with and figure out what to do, that first and foremost, we are neighbors. We're a community, and we love each other, and we want the best for our community. I see friends, neighbors, people that I worked alongside to build the community. And then I retired after 21 years, and it's been a rough year, folks. But anyway, I'm so glad to see all of you, and I know you're here because you care and because you love our community, your community, our whole, I mean, we're, we're talking including Nelson Township. Look at all the money that came in from our neighbors. And we, we stayed up night and day with our committees and working and gathering and meeting and raising funds and having fun. Two minutes left? Okay. So anyway, I, I still see Kurt standing at the front of the community building development team meeting, and he has his hands up like this, and he goes, "We have to remember, this is what we have to say. We have to focus what's good for Cedar Springs. So if we need more time to figure that out, let's take it. If we, we don't have to be rushed and pushed, and I don't want to bump into neighbors. I, I, we just want to be polite and kind and say, tell me what you're thinking. Well, let's go find out. One of the big things is what's going to happen to Kami. And, and if we took in Algoma, we would go to, we would go into another category would be class four library, and that means that she would have to have a master's degree in library science. But she has a master's degree, but it's not in that. Now, so my call, I called the state. I haven't heard back, but is there a grace period? Is there a grace period, six months? Okay, well, I didn't find that out yet, but um, maybe she could take an online class and pass it and no, okay, well, we'll go there later because my time's running out. But you know, back when we were building the library, we started to look into being, joining KDL. And, and we had, we had to stop because we can only, we can't push that at the community and making a new library at the same time. So we stopped really doing that, and we had, that was our number one priority, and we did it. We had it up. So that's something that I wanted to say, and we made it May 8th, 19, 2017. And I just had something that I wanted to say about Mary Evelyn. We asked her to join, to come on the board two years ago. I believe it was two years, it might have been three. She served on the personnel and the finance committee.
Thirty seconds.
Brought in the, the quilting class. She belonged to the friends. She did fundraising, the, the library staff would need something, and they say, let's go ask the quilters. So let's go ask Mary Evelyn. So she was invested, uh, providing. I mean, she got asked for all kinds of things and just recently bought chairs of beanbags for the teen section. She, and then she bought a material with her own money and that because they said they needed these crates covered. So she made covers for the crates, but she's very invested as a, as a board member. And I can say she's very sweet and humble, and she'd give the, the shirt off her back. So I, maybe it's not about that. I don't know what all is going on, but she's sweet, dedicated, generous, involved, invested, and she's missed very few meetings. And I love Cedar Springs, and I love all of you.
We love you too, Donna. It does. Anyone else?
Good evening, my name is Tim Smith. I live on Beach Street, and I just would like to say that, you know, one of the reasons that this meeting is happening has been building, it seems, over the past couple of months since the KDL issue has come up. I've said publicly before that I believe in our library and our community. This library that we have here is amazing. The director is amazing, the staff is amazing. All of it is amazing. These things are not undisputed. Sadly, since the idea of entering into a contract with KDL has come up, there's been a lot of tension connected to that decision. We've gotten to a place where library board meetings aren't happening, and the budget is late. But I don't know that these are things that are things that can't be solved. It's unfortunate. It likely leaves the staff of the library, as well as the general health of the library, in a pretty unhealthy place at the moment. Some of the reasons that the library is such an amazing place is because people in this community have placed a priority on having a great library that's properly funded, properly managed, and widely used. These are all fantastic things. There are folks in our community that have been super generous with time and money to make the library that we all benefit from today possible. My hope is that those in leadership roles will do everything possible to bring the people back together in a spirit of cooperation and goodwill. That, I believe, above all things, is what is best for the library and the community. Tonight, you're going to decide whether or not to remove a volunteer library board member. I don't know her. I don't pretend to know her intentions. What I do know is that we need a functioning library board. This is true if the library continues as it is and has been for years, and it is true if it is decided that the library enters into a contract with KDL. I think it's extremely important for library board members to be very committed to the health of the library and active participants in that mission. I'm not here to ask you to do a particular thing or arrive at a particular outcome. I'm here to request that you will please ask yourself if the library would be best served by removing a board member or if the library board is best served by seeking to work with this person as well as the larger library board in a way that builds cooperation and consensus for the future direction of the library. You are our representatives in this endeavor. Please, please, please make your decision from a place of sober reflection on what continues to put our library in the best situation for the future and its success. Thank you for listening. I'm very grateful for your service to our community.
Thank you.
Hello, Vicki. Unfortunately, I didn't prepare a statement. Vicki Babcock, Solon Township. I want to address partly you, Pam. I know you really, really love your library. I know you have your own agenda regarding the library, your own feelings on what, just from my observations, you seem to have feelings about KDL that you would very much like KDL. That said, that's my opinion. I would like you, as a board, to consider not only the town, the city of Cedar Springs, but the surrounding area whose library this is, who helped build the library. I also wanted to mention that the words malfeasance, misfeasance, non-feasance, very strong language against one of our library board members. And I just wanted to make sure that you know what you're doing and that you have evidence and proof of this, because it can come back to bite you. A other thing I just wanted to say was, again, this library was built by the community, not just Cedar Springs. And if this is about getting getting into KDL, then we need to have everybody involved, and I would like you guys to be above board and not try to do anything that we, that is out of the public eye. Thank you very much.
Yeah. Anyone else?
Good evening, my name's Andrew Thompson, and I live here in Cedar Springs. I don't need a written response, so I don't need to do the whole address. I didn't prepare something because this meeting, for the rank and file who aren't closely aligned with the library, don't know a lot about what's going on. But I'll tell you, it looks like a lot of hoopla. It looks like a lot of shenanigans. No offense, Ms. Mayor, but for you to sit there and say you don't have an opinion, the YouTube video I watched when the KDL was here and the gentleman from Solon Township was here, you seem to have some rather strong feelings. I don't fault you for having the feelings. I want the city council and the, the library board to have opinions and feelings about what's best for our community and how to get there. But when we hide them, deny them, do things below board, it, it makes the rest of us question. I came to this meeting not because I'm a hardcore library person, but because I feel like there's, I can't find out what's going on. And I know there won't be a response to this, but I'm really curious, as, as, were these charges by the city manager or were these charges by the city council or these charges by an individual? Because I think it makes a big difference in my understanding of the situation to know exactly who is levying these very specific charges. And my last thing that I'll close with is, based on the other meeting when the KDL was here, my understanding is, is the citizens would have to ratify an agreement for the long term anyways. I think replacing board members to end around it and speed it up seems disingenuous to the citizens who, you could always put it to a vote or something like that, since it's going to come to that anyways. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Uh, my name is Charlie Curtis, and I agree exactly with what was just said. This, this appears to me to be like a kangaroo court. I'm a friend of Mary Evelyn Vu's, uh, and I know her personally, and I know what she's like. And the charges put against her are for the mere fact of intimidation, not for anything else. And this lady has served your community. She has done her job. There, there is, there is no fault in here, and I would say that, that you guys are the ones that are committing malfeasance with this assault. This is an assault on your library board. You didn't like how they were going to vote, so you are assaulting them one by one, the ones that you don't agree with their vote in order to get them off the board. You started with Karen and, and bullied her off the board. Then you went and wanted to have a meeting with, with, uh, when, when you're, when the library board chairman Bob was away in Florida, you wanted to change the bylaws in order to get him removed from the board without him being able to defend himself or represent himself. And now you're trying to railroad Mary Evelyn off the board in, in rapid fashion. And this is, this is, this is not, uh, you know, this is malfeasance, and it, and I look at it as a coup d'etat on your board. Your board deserves to make the decisions, and you don't like those decisions, so you colluded to remove as many of these board members as you could in order to get the decision that you want. That's all I have to say.
My name is Janet Armstrong, and I live in Cedar Springs. You know that I find what you're doing up there very condescending. I'm watching you shake your head every time somebody speaks. This is a public forum for all of the people in Cedar Springs, and you know what you make me feel like? Like dirt. I don't like your attitude. I haven't seen that on her face. I haven't seen it on hers. Hers, hers are hers, but I've seen it on yours the whole time. What you're doing is wrong. You need to know that. We, I'll start a recall to recall the board and the mayor.
My name's Kurt Maybe. I've been involved with the CBDT for 10 years. Retired off of this last year. We started 10 years ago, we had this. This was our community right here, what you're seeing here tonight. That back there hanging behind rows was at the center focal point. During the time of 10 years, that got healed, got fixed. Why? On the CBDT, we had two rules. Follow North Star, what's best for Cedar Springs. Let all politics go away. The second rule was, there's no politics. We have brought up before, this library is built on donations, no cost to the community whatsoever. However, I know a number of you on the board also were huge parts of building this library, but I don't know if you're aware of, of the top six donors to our library, not one of them live in Cedar Springs. Not one. It was a community library, and now we're looking at the possibility of fractioning Solon Township, who's worked diligently with us as a community, part of the community. And when I always speak of the community, I talk about the Cedar Springs School District community, the way it was when I was a kid many, many years ago. And now what we're doing right now is horrendous. KDL, KDL wants us. I don't know if they came calling to us when we had that little one, less than one room schoolhouse library, but as soon as we had a new building, they were knocking on our door. Why? Well, because we have a hell of a program going there. We have lots of involvement. We have lots of involvement in people. It is a community center, and it's driven by the community. We cannot continue to do this political stuff. We're above that, guys. We've got to take a look at what's best. If we go to KDL, I've been told we've been operating in the, excuse me. I've been told we're operating in the red. I checked today, we're not in the red. We're right on track. Budget's just fine. I also checked and found out what KDL will charge us, our millage, but they'll give us $20,000 back. The $20,000 will not cover the cost of mowing and snow removal and heating and cooling and maintenance and upkeep. It won't come close to it. It's going to cost, the city says it's going to be a decrease in the millage. Oh, it might be a decrease, but it's going to be more money out of your pocket to run the library. I ask you, please, rise above this political crap and do what's right for Cedar Springs. We got a hell of a community here, guys, and you guys have put in too much time and effort down through here also to get, have this going on in Cedar Springs. This is not what this hometown of mine's like. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Craig Ladyman, Algoma Township. I just wanted to kind of come up and make some addresses. I know a lot of these KDL issues are going through the community, not only, you know, where you're living right here, but also where we are. A lot of these agreements kind of come into a long-term contract. We're also facing that in Algoma. 15 years is quite a long time to commit tax money from the people that give it up to you year after year. Now, when we have taxation, we need to have representation as well. And so when we have this representation, it's sometimes not representation that you might not agree with. But we are taking the money from the people, and we're not going to give it to some third party for 15 years and then pretend like we're getting the best value of our tax money. It's not good stewardship. People work hard for the money. Right now, we're going through some economic challenges as a, you know, community, not just a community, but as a state, as a nation, as a, as a world, and we need to start making better decisions with that. A lot of times, we think taking this money and sending it somewhere else is going to somehow give us a better result or a better outcome. But what it does is basically you lose control. You lose control locally. You lose the say of the people that you're taking. You lose the say of the people that you're taking the money from. And what you're doing is you're silencing them. And so what do you end up with? You're gonna take my money by gunpoint? And then you're gonna take it and do it whatever you want with it. And if I don't like it, well, you know what? We got a 15-year contract. Too bad. So sad. Long-term commitments like that, you're taking the local people out of their library by stealing their money, giving it to a third party and not giving them a say in their board and then kicking off nice people that donate their time, their money, their property to this community. The investment needs to be in community, not in some third party that wants to administrate the money and pretend they're running a library at your benefit. They're not. I don't know how much business savvy you have, but anytime you add a third party to something, it's automatic 30%. Don't think that you're gonna give your money to some third party and you're gonna get a deal. You're not. You're gonna lose basically what you can do with that money from the hard-working people of this community. And I say taxation without representation, you're gonna kick somebody off this board just because they don't agree with you. That's malfeasance on your part, not hers.
Anyone else?
Mark Laws. I live here in town. Had the privilege to work with Kurt and Tom McCloudy and Donna and a lot of people on the CBDT. Had a privilege of working with Rose and Pam on the festival for many years. Had a privilege working with Jerry and our current fire chief to help get us a new fire building. So it's been, uh, we got good people in this community, fantastic people. I've looked into a lot of different libraries around the state and the closest one that I have any numbers on is from Cannon Township, which is not too far from us. And their numbers at KDL, if you take the number of people they have in Cannon Township, the number of people that go to the library, the number of times their cards are swiped and they take a book out and you take in their millage that they take. I don't know how much it costs each time somebody checked out something from the Rockford Library in Cannon Township. $329. You guys are not doing your job. KDL is not the only bus in town. There's four other places that do exactly what KDL does. They'll let you buy it on a à la carte basis. You don't have to buy the whole program. KDL is very expensive. $329 for a checkout? Really? You're telling me you wanna spend $329 for a kid to check a book out? And he's only borrowing it. He's not even buying the book. That's to rent it. You're renting the book for a couple of weeks? $329. Give me a break, you guys. You're better than that. I know you are. You haven't even looked at the other places. I can give them to you. I know all four of them. I've talked to them all. They're very cheap. You're not locked in for 10, 15 years. You can leave after a year if you don't like it. Come on, come on, do the right thing. Do your homework. Look at the numbers. Find out what it's gonna cost. Just like Craig said, 30% automatic when you bring in a third party. With KDL, they're only a middleman to another party and another party. So I know you're better. Please do the right thing. The community deserves better. These are great people.
Anyone else?
Madam Mayor, before we continue, I need like 30 seconds to talk to the clerk and then we might have to deal with some other issue. And then we can continue if that's okay. Madam Mayor, this time I would ask for approximately a five-minute recess so we can deal with the planning commission issue and then we'll go back into this hearing if that's acceptable.
Sure. So.
Ma'am, this is not public.
So would, madam?
I am trying to deal with an administrative issue and then we will get back to public comment, please. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, would you like, Madam Clerk, excuse me? Madam Clerk, would you like a motion for a recess for five minutes? Seven minutes? Okay, so should we, like you need the planning commission to come in for five minutes? Okay. So I need a motion to adjourn for five minutes to allow?
I would make a motion to adjourn for five minutes to allow a planning commission to do whatever business they need to do.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, all opposed? Okay, we're adjourned for five minutes? You need us to shut down? Does planning commission need our? Okay. Thank you.
Want the thingies?
No.
Okay, Mr. Womack, how do you want us to proceed?
Uh, so Mr. Nixon, as you're aware, the planning commission meeting is supposed to meet at seven. We do have a full crowd here for another meeting. I apologize for that. We got double booked. Yep. Uh, so what I'd recommend is suspending with the normal agenda. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm trying to conduct a meeting. If I could have some silence in this room, please. Um, call the meeting to order, uh, call for a forum. Uh, declare that you have a forum here and then accept the motion to adjourn this meeting and then we will come back at some other time.
So I will call this meeting of the planning commission to order uh, March 7th, 23 at 7:11 PM. And we do have a quorum. Call out names or, or, uh, Ms. Napperowski. Mr. Jason.
Here. Mr. Hoag.
Thank you. I always want to say the other word.
Fine.
Pronounce it differently. Mr. Hoag is here and Mr. Nixon is here.
Lisa Atchison.
And Ms. Atchison. Mr. Nixon, do you have a quorum? And we have a quorum. And we should vote to suspend the meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Support.
Or adjourn the meeting until a, uh,
Till next month.
Till a time can be set to.
I'd like to speak with the city planner and see what his schedule is like, cause obviously this is gonna be probably a special meeting. But you have a, a motion in second.
Okay. So if we have a motion, let's go with yea, your name.
Yea.
Yea.
Okay, yea. So I will close the meeting.
Motion carries.
Motion carries. I will close the meeting. And we will have an adjournment for tonight until set time.
Thank you.
Nice to see ya.
You ready?
Okay, we good?
Do we need a motion to go back?
We do. I was just making sure everybody was settled. Good?
I'd make a motion to, uh, end our recess and resume the meeting.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are back in session. Any other public comment?
I'm Bob Elliott, uh, representative from Soul and Township, the library board. I've been, uh, on the library board for, I don't know, a number of years. I'll just say 13, 15 years. Been the chair for quite some time. And, uh, I've been on, of course, Mary Evelyn came on long after me. Uh, Mary Evelyn is a, a great human being. She's, uh, has a heart of, uh, saint. And she does great work for the library board. Uh, she's nothing but, uh, the best far as I'm concerned. I have no idea what this is about. Makes me question everybody's integrity that's involved with it. And, uh, their intelligence to a certain extent. She, she does nothing but good things for the for the library board. And in relationship to that, the city. And, uh, she's, she took good care of things. Don't understand this. Uh, understand that there's been a few shenanigans while I was going in Florida. I don't know nothing about them, but I'm sure they'd be quite interesting. I think, uh, council might wanna consider this thoroughly before you make any fatal decision. Thank you. Have a good day. Wow.
Anyone else?
My name is Mark Hoskins. I reside in Soul and Township, 619 Mile Road. I am also a trustee on Soul and Township's board. I sat right here where you folks are here tonight. In 1982, I was on the city council. I lived in Cedar Springs. We, during that time, we had a lot of issues. And we took care of a lot of issues. This is not how we took care of them. Mary Evelyn has done a good job from everything I can understand, everything I hear. I've not been involved with the library a lot, but from everything I know, she has done a good job. The true story will be how you handle what you've started here tonight. What you do with this. And if you do decide to replace her, who you decide to replace her with, that will be the true story of this whole evening. And, but I encourage you not to replace her. Good job. Thank you.
Anyone else? Is there anyone on Zoom, Madam Clerk? Okay. If there's anyone on Zoom that would like to speak, if you raise your hand. If there's anyone that would like to speak, that would like to unmute themselves. Okay. Anyone else?
My name is Mary Evelyn Boo. I innocently came on this board in order to serve the citizens of this community, having no idea of dirty politics I would encounter. You are accusing me of charges that you, Pam Conley, you're the city manager, should have to face for your totally unethical attempt at hostile takeover of the library board. You have pressured library board members to resign. You have pressured library board members to resign. You have falsely accused people of misdeeds in order to smear their character. You have orchestrated an attempt to remove our board chairman while he was on vacation and unable to represent and defend himself. You may have colluded privately with K D L on strategies to put them on every tax bill of this village. And I'm sure if we knew what was going on behind the scenes, there would be much more. And finally, you have seen fit to make me a scapegoat in this entire process of dismantling the library board entirely in order to get the vote you want with K D L. I'm ashamed of what the government of Cedar Springs has become. Please, if there is anyone else here that agrees with me and is also ashamed of the city council, can you stand up with me? Earl Alver, Cedar Springs. I just want to say that I'm appalled by you putting her name in the paper and in the posting. That didn't need to be done. You could have done it generically and you have opened yourself up to a potential lawsuit by doing that. And you didn't need to put what your words were. You could have just said that we want to do a special business meeting and to remove a board member. That's all it had to say. This woman has to still live in this community and you have damaged that by what you put on Facebook. And I'm telling you what, it blew up today. Not on Facebook much, but I saw many postings. And you should all be ashamed of yourselves for what you did.
Anyone else? There are none? Moving on to action items. Item A, a hearing for Mary Evelyn Vu for malfeasance, misfeasance, or non-feasance of a library board member. A motion to remove Marilyn Vu. Do, do we need to?
Yeah, so I mean, I'll get into it in a greater length, but I think the appropriate thing would be to, I, I guess, motion to open a hearing. Um, and then we could conduct a hearing and then whatever you guys want to do after that is up to.
Okay. So I need a motion to open a hearing?
I would make a motion to open a hearing for Mary Evelyn Vu for malfeasance, mal- misfeasance or non-feasance of a library board member.
I'll support. Okay. Oh, you need to vote on the actual hearing to open the hearing, correct?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I, I, I heard some noises from the crowd and I was.
Yeah.
Acted, so.
Just to clarify, because this is not the part where we actually have the hearing. We're voting to have a hearing.
Correct.
Okay, so all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Motion carries?
And a mayor, uh, I mean, the crowd has been told that they can't publicly comment on this hearing. I understand that some emotions are, are, you know, intense and raw.
And to do the right thing.
And I appreciate that, but we are trying to conduct a hearing. This is a public, uh, meeting. That doesn't mean that the public gets to comment. Um, and, and what.
Okay, we've had, we've had public comment.
He gets a chance to say.
We're not there yet and you are not her. Great, when we get there.
So, I mean, again, I know it's a full room, but I would ask the public to, you know, kind of keep things to a minimum. We are trying to conduct a, you know, a legal procedure here. Um, and I will attempt my best.
Okay, so we are now in a hearing.
So, Madam Mayor, I did, uh, put together a memo, uh, regarding this hearing. Under state law, as the authority to create a joint library board, uh, and to put together a contract with a, uh, township nearby to provide library services. Part of that city law also indicates, and I quote here, that the, shall, the agreement shall provide a method of removal of and the clauses upon which removal of a board member, uh, may be based. So then we have a contract agreement with Solon Township, I think the most recent one is from twenty seventeen. Um, and within that agreement, it states, and I quote, the mayor of the city, by and with consent of the city council, may remove any director appointed for any reason following a hearing on the matter. That's kind of where we're at today. So, um, Madam Mayor, you did ask me to put together a memo detailing some of the accusations. Um, whether I have personal knowledge or anybody on the board has personal knowledge um, about, uh, what Ms. Vu is accused of doing. Uh, of course, this is not a courtroom and we don't have to follow strict evidentiary procedures. Um, but obviously we want everybody to, uh, see truthfully, um, and only, um, and not lie. So. That being said, um, by my office and not personally, um, I would allege that Ms. Vu has committed malfeasance, misfeasance, or non-feasance of her position as a library board member for the reasons listed in my memo. I don't know if you want me to go through each and every single one of them. Um, if you want me to go one by one and provide Ms. Vu an opportunity to respond, I, I don't know how you'd like me to proceed.
What is the will of the council? What? I mean, you've read all of this. What would you like?
I, I'd like to give her an opportunity to respond to.
Okay, so do you want to go line by line?
Yeah, I got, yeah, I guess, actually, yeah.
Ms. Vu, if you would like to take the microphone. Madam Mayor, she did ask that she have somebody who can.
Of course, absolutely.
Could you pull the microphone down just a little bit so we can hear you better? Thank you.
So.
We do have a couple of documents for the, city council to look at. Uh, the clerk says she couldn't run copies until after the vote. So I'd like to just pass it so that each of you can get a chance to read it. It's a time, it's a timeline.
I, the clerk needs to clarify?
Does the board wish the copies to be made?
Madam Mayor, you could also ask that they just orally state whatever.
Yeah, why don't you just tell us what's.
This is a timeline of cancellation meeting, starting on Saturday, February twenty-two. Heard about the weather. I contacted Bob. He said, you know, we'll call later on when we see what the weather is. Now, everyone knows what the weather was on Monday.
Tony, could you identify yourself for the rest of the board, for the people who don't know who you are?
I'm Tony, I'm the secretary of the library.
Madam Mayor, um, while I understand where he's going, um, no accusation has been.
I didn't ask for your part of it, sir.
Excuse me, sir, you don't.
However, the council most certainly does ask for Mr. Womack's input and clarification. Thank you.
Madam Mayor, could you ask the witness to address the chair and not the city manager?
Sure, so. I, I'm not understanding what you're trying to tell me.
I am the secretary of the library.
Yes, which is what I was asking you to tell for the people who don't know who you are. Yes.
And my duty is to send out notifications. I contacted the chair on Saturday because the weather forecast was going to be very poor for Sunday, on Monday. As everyone knows, we had an ice storm, power outages, everything. In fact, the city school buses would only drive on paved roads. So when I contacted the chair, um, informed him of this, he said, cancel the meeting, which I didn't do. And if you take a look at the timeline.
Just a minute. Mr. Manager, can the chair cancel a meeting?
Not under the bylaws of the library.
I didn't.
Chair can. He has that authority.
Excuse me, I wasn't asking you.
I know you weren't asking me, but he's saying a lie to you.
I, 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 I've read, I've read the bylaws. Mr. Manager, I cannot cancel a meeting of the city council.
Well.
That's not, I mean, that's not within my scope. A, a regular meeting, that's not a, that's not a thing.
Correct. The mayor does not have the authority to cancel this meeting, but of course, we're not talking about the city council, which has.
Right.
Bylaws.
Sure.
My understanding of the reading of the bylaws, which have been presented to all of you in your packet, which is available to the public and which, of course, Mr. Owens should know. I don't believe that the chairperson or the secretary has authority to cancel a meeting, a regular meeting that has been approved of by a majority of the board. So my accusation from my office and not personally, because of course, I guess this should be stated at, at the outset. I understand Mary Evelyn Vu to be a good person. You're not here talking about whether she's a good person or not.
I agree.
You're talking about whether she's fulfilling the duties of her office. So. The accusation would be that she, on Monday, I believe, twenty, twenty-seven, she did intentionally not attend a regular meeting of the library board despite numerous reminders to attend and despite her written statement that she would attend that meeting. She knew that her absence would cause a lack of quorum on the board.
Put Karen in a very difficult position.
Because she knew that, uh, with the Solon Township members already stating that they would not attend, that the board would not be able to conduct its business. Let's see here. Then furthermore, after she told the, Ms. Ringler, uh, the acting chairperson at that meeting that she would attend, she then no-called, no-showed the meeting, which would be a violation of library board laws, Article Three, A, Subpart Two.
We were also, I was at this meeting and Karen had contacted me about how I, this is my meeting, how, what do I do? I said, you contact your people, like, it's your meeting. And she had contacted Ms. Vu and she said to me, I have a text saying she's coming. I said, then you have the meeting. When we went to, when they went to.
Are you testifying?
I'm clarifying. I'm telling you. I'm telling you about.
Yourself a member of this hearing, which means I would like to have you refused.
Madam Chair, if, if we have continued outbursts, we can remove people if they won't.
Okay.
Rules of the city council. But if I could very briefly, because Mr. Owens apparently doesn't understand these things.
Oh, yes, I do.
Madam Mayor, could you direct Mr. Owens to address the chair, please?
I did, I just.
And I'm, and I'm not recognizing you right now because we're trying to clarify what it is that happened.
Even though.
You're telling a story. That's what the problem is.
Even though the city council is sitting as neutral arbiters in this decision-making process, uh, the city council members obviously attend meetings and have personal knowledge about things. Personal knowledge can act as evidence uh, in this hearing. So, Madam Mayor, you are to remain as the neutral arbiter, but.
I am.
But you can take judicial notice of certain things and you have personal knowledge about certain things.
Um, I just want to say, we were worried when Mary Evelyn didn't come because she had told Karen in a text that she was coming. And we had Heidi and Karen contact her, both by calling her and texting her to make sure that, you know, she hadn't fallen down, that she was in fact, okay. And there was no response.
We have her speak.
Yes. Madam Mayor, would you like to respond to that?
I would, please.
Everything you said is correct. Up until my son called that they have no electricity, they have no power, and he came over for supper. I think everyone with children would understand that they would have their child come over for supper, no matter what, in an ice storm. And that is why, and as soon as I, he left, I contacted Heidi. And then you called me Wednesday, but before that I had told, um, Kami, I told Tony. People did know. And I contacted Heidi as soon as my son went home, because he had a generator on them. But until then, he had no electricity. As most people in Solon knew, there was no electricity. And that is why, and it's the first and only meeting I have missed.
And, and my mayor, I may, and my duties as secretary since two thousand and eight. We've had to cancel various meetings because of weather. It's a normal thing to happen for the library board. We do it based on the board members' safety. We don't want them traveling and that. And we don't want the public extending themselves out into that type of weather. So when I contacted the chair, informed him of what was happening, he said, cancel the meeting.
Again, I'm very confused about how the chair who was in Florida, who was not going to be.
Right there on the paperwork.
To be, to be participating when Karen was the chair for that night.
That's a different.
No, she wasn't. She was not the chair because it wasn't, it was canceled long before he even decided to get into it. I canceled the meeting in the morning and in the afternoon I contacted everyone. I even contacted the clerks of Solon.
Okay, just to clarify, Bob Elick is the chair.
That is correct.
Karen was the vice chair until she recently resigned.
She does not overrule the chair.
Bob Elick had notified the entire library board previously that he was going to be out of town.
That doesn't mean he loses his power.
She's the chair for the meeting.
If the mayor leaves the town, does the vice chair then take over?
Yes.
Only the meeting. You don't take over her duties.
I, if she is unavailable, I am absolutely getting a call from the city manager and handling the things that she would normally handle.
And when Jerry Hall was the mayor, that was, and I would, he would go, I would.
The library board.
I'm the person.
The library board, operating by Robert's rules, it's the chair and the secretary.
Not your bylaws.
Not only that, I would like to ask the chair something.
Sure.
According to Robert's Rules of Order, there's supposed to be a committee assigned, a confidential committee to look at these allegations under sixty-three point one to ten, false version, that they're supposed to write up a report, all the peo- all the people are supposed to sign it. I would like to have a copy of that report presented here now. Because she hasn't even received a written notice in the mail.
Robert's Rules is an overarching structure of how boards function.
And I would like to.
Individual boards, individual boards.
Investigation of this.
Bylaws and Michigan state law for how they function.
That is correct. But.
So the bylaws are what supersede Robert's Rules.
And does your bylaws supersede the requirement of a disciplinary hearing to have a confidential community or committee review the investigation and do it before such time.
The manager has just, the manager has just read that piece of our bylaws.
He hasn't given us the committee.
That, that's not a part of our bylaws.
It's part of Robert's Rules of Orders, which are part of your bylaws.
No, they're not.
Your, your bylaws say that you all adopt them.
And a mayor.
You've adopted them.
Sure.
Sorry, I didn't realize we had so many parliamentarians in the room. You know, we're kind of getting mired down in the point. Mr. Owens, again, he seems to think he knows some things that we don't, which, uh, would have been happy to have discussed with him at any point. I'm in my office sixty hours a week. I've not heard from Mr. Owens. I think he's trying to create a, uh, uh, an atmosphere where he will have the crowd boo and jeer and, and.
Yeah.
Operate him, which doesn't mean it's fact.
Yeah.
It put, it put, it put the vice chair in a very difficult position for a huge portion of the day when she was trying to set up to have this meeting.
Mayor.
So I'm, I'm not, I'm not recognizing you right now.
And, uh, I think the important thing, because the accusation. And I, I think the important thing, because the accusation here is that the meeting was not legally canceled. Um, and I've heard, I've heard no explanation as to how a chairperson who's out of the state, it was through the authority of the Vice Chair who's in the state.
Who was scheduled to run the meeting.
Regularly scheduled meeting, where a majority of the board has not made a decision about canceling the meeting or not.
And the next piece is, um, so we weren't able to conduct business. They weren't able to conduct business, which, there was a substantial piece of this, I, I don't know if you can move on to the finance.
Mayor.
I'm, I'm not recognizing you right now.
Is there a particular reason you're not?
Yes, because we're trying to move on to the next piece.
I can respond to his accusation about my not.
This isn't an accusation.
He never contacted me and sent me any notices as the Secretary. He went to the Director of the Library and asked them to send me notices.
What?
He never contacted me at all.
I, well, just for, for a point of order for all of us, I think on this particular piece, there's some debate by, uh, between Mr. Owen and, and ourselves about whether this meeting was properly canceled. But beyond that, um, it, it sounds like Mrs. Vu was being hospitable to her children and did not make that meeting. Um, so, I.
For her sake, and her kids' sake.
So that was, that was the choice that was made, and, and so, th- there we are, and I, can we move on to the next point, unless there is additional? Okay.
One point, if I may, Mayor.
Sure.
Mr. Womack has been sending emails to the Director of the Library, rather than to the Library Board Chair or Secretary, to notify them of various issues. I have not heard from him once since before the meeting was canceled. All the emails he sent, in fact, just as a note, the city website lists the library as a department of the city now. It's not even part of the Library Board. I don't know how the City Council did that one.
Yes.
Can we please, I'm, I'm, you know, I know there's debate of, of other stuff, okay?
Go ahead.
We are here for a certain reason, and we need to kind of like, get on to that reason, okay? So let's, we'll talk about that stuff at another time, but we need to move on with, with the accusations, the hearing, and we'll, and I, I hear you, and I understand, and I've heard everybody here today, but we kind of got to focus on where we're supposed to be.
Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
I think I can make this short and simple. Ms. Vu, were you aware of the meeting at that moment, at that night?
Well, he said I was.
Okay, so, did you indicate to the board members that were assembled that you would attend that meeting?
I sure.
Did you then inform the Vice Chair that you were not coming to that meeting? Uh, are you required by your bylaws to call and inform the Vice Chair that you would not be attending that meeting?
All right, moving on.
So, Madam Mayor, I could go through each of these, but, I mean, a couple of these are going to be based off of Ms. Vu's decision to not attend that meeting that night.
Right.
Including usurp, uh, usurping the power of the Vice Chair to conduct the meeting by, uh, making sure that there was no quorum present. Um, and also usurping the power of the board to hold a meeting, which they had by majority vote scheduled as a regular meeting, to conduct business. Uh, that business was obviously not conducted. So there are some additional violations, uh, that stem from that. Uh, the bylaws of the Library, Article Three, A, Subpart One, requires that they meet monthly. That did not occur, um, because Ms. Vu did not attend this meeting. Obviously, the Solon Township Board members didn't attend also, but we don't have power or authority over their board, and they, you know, they have not addressed their board members.
What was some of the business that was supposed to happen at that meeting?
So, I don't have personal knowledge about this, um, but I understand that, uh, Ms. Vu has been failing to meet with Finance Committee. Uh, she's not attended Finance Committee meetings.
I'd like to know how you have found it out, I have gone to every meeting that has been scheduled.
If I could continue, Madam Chair.
Please, we'll come back to you.
Um, and that she also, uh, attended a Finance Committee meeting whereby the Director of the Library, uh, was told she was not welcome to attend that meeting, uh, which is a direct violation of the bylaws of the Library, where the Library Director has authority to attend all subcommittee meetings and shall have the authority to speak at all subcommittee meetings. Obviously, I think somebody else directed that to occur, um, but Ms. Vu went along with that and didn't speak up against the violation of the bylaws.
I have no idea what he's talking about.
I don't either.
I have no idea.
Mayor, may I? Um, there has been no official meeting of the Finance Committee. I would be the one posting.
Okay, so just to clarify, there was a Finance Committee meeting.
But there was no official one.
Okay, there was an actual Finance Committee meeting at which the Director and, it was here, because, Mr. Manager, did you not attend, I'm not talking to you right now, Mr. Manager. You were not at this meeting. Mr. Manager, did you not attend?
I'm defining what a meeting is.
No, Mr. Manager, no, stop. Mr. Manager, did you attend the end of this Finance Committee meeting that was held with the City Manager, that was held with the Library Board Chair, Ms. Vu, the Library Director, and Ms. Shelley, I don't know her last name.
I did arrive at the end of that meeting.
Okay, Ms. Vu, this was a meeting that happened, and I was here. Hey, I'm not talking to you, I'm talking to her.
I'm addressing an important point of order.
And I am addressing her. And you were at this meeting, yes?
At this meeting.
That is my understanding.
So how is she not being there?
Wow.
How is she not being there?
Hey, you're out of order, you're out of order.
She was there, and he's accusing her of not being there.
No, he's not.
Yes, he is.
No, he's not.
I would really love for Mrs. Vu to continue to have her support person, it's important to her and it's for her comfort, please.
And I think, let me just say that, Ms. Vu, I think you are a wonderful human being.
Let me say.
I think that you care very deeply about the Library.
Mayor.
I think that there is some, I think that there is some serious lack of understanding about what this role involves, as far as what has to be done. Did the, did the Library Director present a budget to you all at this? Okay, what was the response of that budget?
We went over, we asked questions.
Did you accept the budget?
We did not at that point, um, we were, we're going to have another meeting and go accept it, we have to do that before March twenty-third.
Okay, did the Director ask to be at that meeting?
We haven't planned it yet.
Right, I understand.
If we have it, yes, she will be at it.
And has there been a meeting?
No, not since the one we had here.
That, I don't understand what he's talking about.
That's, that's the problem.
No, it's not a problem.
So, okay, again, no, I, no, you may not.
Mayor, please. Please, Mayor, as a courtesy.
Madam Mayor, Mr. Owens has shown himself to be incapable of, of making. If the crowd would allow me to make my statement, as I'm entitled to do, thank you. He, he's made it, uh, so that he can't make short, simple statements, he wants to continue to interfere. Um, if he, if he would like to make short, easy-to-understand statements instead of screaming, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, I mean, I'd like to hear from him, he, but.
Mrs. Vu, was it your understanding that you all were supposed to talk about the budget? The, the finance at that budget meeting, at the regular meeting that Monday night?
We did talk about it, oh, wait a minute.
Okay.
No.
Was it not on the agenda?
Not that I'm aware of.
Wasn't it under the discussion items on the agenda? I, I didn't make the agenda.
I don't.
I just read the agenda that was in front of me. Did, did you read the agenda before the meeting?
I did, but I do not have it with me. I was, I was not, because Bob wouldn't have been there, he was part of it, Shelley and I were part of it, Shelby wasn't going to be there, but that didn't excuse me for not being there, my son.
I, I understand, it's this overarching piece of, did you understand that the Library Director had a deadline for the budget?
Yes, March twenty-third.
Okay.
That does not mean the board had. Just a statement of fact, the board doesn't have that.
Did you understand that that deadline was not something that the Library Director picked as a random day? That she had a, an obligation?
Yes.
And did she provide a budget to you prior to that?
She provided a budget to us when we came to this meeting.
Okay, and.
We went over it, we asked her line by line, we said we would have another meeting when we.
Okay, why did you need another meeting, why was that budget?
None of us didn't understand it, I had a meeting just with Kami.
Madam Mayor.
No, no, I need to listen to her, Mary Evelyn is.
She doesn't know all the facts about it, I could provide you with some.
She doesn't know the facts about what she did and when she did it?
She doesn't.
That's a problem.
Calling meetings.
That's a problem.
No.
This isn't about calling a meeting, it was about getting this budget managed.
We have till the twenty-third.
We got until we're done.
We were, I was told we had till the twenty-third, that's all I.
By the Director, by the City.
Okay.
Would you like to?
What I am seeing here is, I want to hear from you. We're, you're the person we're supposed to be hearing from, and we're getting all these other things thrown in, and if, I would love to talk and hear from you.
I do apologize for you.
I would like, I want to talk to her, I want to hear from her, she's the one. You cutting in and everything is not helping, it, it's not helping, it's not helping her, because she's confused, and that's part of this. She's being, we want to make sure that she, it's her on the Library Board, it's her decisions. It's her opinion, it's her idea, that's what being on a board is. It's not somebody standing beside her, telling her how things are.
My answer.
No, no, that's not what it is, I want to hear from her, I want to talk to her. I want her to answer, and I'm, I want, I, and I'm, and I'm, and I'm getting warmth and everything from you, and I know how much you love the Library, I can tell. But I want to hear from you. I want this to be your decision, your opinion, you need to decide.
Where do you want me to start again?
Okay, so let's, you had a budget meeting, right?
And I did attend.
You absolutely attended, and the Manager was at the end of that meeting, correct? You came in towards the end of that meeting?
Was, yes.
Okay, and Kami, the Library Director, presented a budget.
Correct.
We on the Council do this all the time, right, we have a big budget meeting coming, our finance person presents a budget. You then, let me understand correctly, because I, this is what I was told, the Finance Committee, which is you and Bob and Shelley, rejected that budget.
We did not reject it.
Okay.
Said we were going to go over it line by line, we were going to get together again, just to understand. I don't always understand what every line is.
Okay.
Kami and I sat down the next day, and we went over line by line, she explained it to me, which made it a lot of sense.
Okay.
And I understood, so then we were going to have another meeting, and yes, Kami was more than welcome to come.
Okay.
Never not have Kami come to it.
It has to be an open.
Because I got a very different story from that. And that there was a set amount of money that needed to be cut?
I don't know about that, I do know that we did talk to Bob about Solon putting in some more money. And we were going to work with that.
Because you didn't then put, so you, you then felt that you had an understanding of the budget?
Yes.
Okay, but you were going to have another meeting?
Well, that was, Bob had to leave, then I had to leave, because I had a doctor's appointment, so we couldn't say right then that we were going to approve it.
Okay, but Kami told you that she had a deadline?
Yes, but again, we know that, I know the deadline to be the twenty-third.
Okay.
Which is a couple of weeks away yet, we still have time to get that in.
So, did you schedule that meeting with her?
Not yet.
Okay, it was on the agenda for the meeting that didn't happen. So, was that going to be discussed?
It would probably have been a discussion, but it would not have included the whole board.
Why wouldn't it have included the whole board if it was at the regular meeting?
Well, we had the ice storm, so people.
But it was on the agenda, take the ice storm out of it, was it your intention to come to that meeting?
Discuss the finance, yes.
Okay, was anything sent forward to the Library Director on what your intentions were, or your thoughts?
No.
To, to be part of the discussion that's on the agenda?
I did not send her anything.
Which is what she told me. This is, this is the difficulty, no, no, this is the difficulty.
The issue of the meeting.
No, no, the issue.
The issue of the meeting that you're asking about, if I may, please.
No.
So you don't.
You weren't at the meeting, you weren't at either of these meetings.
Don't need.
You're not on the Finance Committee, and you weren't at this meeting.
I'm the Secretary, and I would have posted a public notice of a Finance Committee meeting, and they had not told me.
So, is your position that the meeting that they had wasn't a meeting?
That is correct, it was the Treasurer. The Treasurer was appointed on January first, so she's trying to learn the job. She's trying to find out what's going on, so she meets with Darla, who is our accountant, and.
Was Darla at that meeting?
Yeah, so she's our accountant, and we're, we're talking about what's going on.
So, just to clarify, you did or did not have a Finance Committee meeting where Kami presented the budget that you attended?
It was, there was five of us here talking about the budget, yeah.
Okay, and you came to do this specific thing as the Finance Committee?
I was not aware when I got here that we were to approve it.
No, no, but that was your understanding, that the budget was going to be presented?
Yes.
Okay, so you had a Finance Committee meeting, is he saying you didn't?
The only way a Finance Committee meeting can be held is if you have it posted for public comment, and you have an agenda posted. They're checking with the accountant to find out what they.
Anyone have any questions?
For a meeting. We're trying to.
I don't have a question, but I have a comment.
Sure.
I think there's a lot of badgering going on, I think she has said that there was a meeting, there was proposed to be another meeting, that meeting has not been scheduled. Okay, I think that's as far as it needs to go, you can't make a determination on something that if you haven't had that final meeting, to make that determination.
I, I understand that.
That point, that point has been made clear.
The next piece I'm trying to understand is, did Kami try to schedule a meeting with you?
Not yet.
She didn't.
Not contacted me.
She didn't contact you in a text and say, are you meeting, are you, there was no meeting over, there wasn't a, we're going to meet over Zoom?
No, I do not have anything like that from her.
And I don't either.
You're not on the Finance Committee, this isn't about you.
I'm the Secretary to post the notices, she would, she would notify me to post it. Can we move on?
Please.
Madam Mayor, of course, I don't have personal knowledge about this, but do you have personal knowledge about the, and of course, part of the issue here is I know that the Library Director is worried about being fired by this Library Board.
Correct.
That's one of the reasons that she's not been asked to come here and testify about her personal knowledge.
Yes.
Do you have knowledge about meetings that might have been? Do you have knowledge about meetings that might have been attempted to be set?
So Mrs. Powell and I were contacted by the library director and I, I'm, I'm working very hard because I'm trying to protect her. Because she has been coming to me when she's frustrated because she presents a budget and is told she has to cut fifty thousand dollars. She has no idea how or when.
That was suggested, but we also suggested that Solon add more and then the fifty wouldn't have to be cut.
Okay, but she wasn't given an option of how to have Solon add more money?
And because we hadn't finished talking about the media or the budget. We were going to talk about it again.
Do you have the authority to have Solon pay more money?
No, we asked, we talked to them about it.
So.
No authority.
I was contacted with, because again, it's the city finance person with a, I don't know how to do this. I don't. How do I cut fifty thousand dollars and I need to have them meet with me? And Ms. Powell and I met with the library director and said, you're going to need to have your finance committee meeting meet again. And she texts, she, I said, who's on your finance committee? And she told us, and she said, one of these people has left the state for a vacation. And I said, well, what about the other two? And one of those people is sick, is what she was told, so that they were going to meet over Zoom. And she said, I would like to come to this meeting.
I, Shelley is the other person and I don't think she's got contacted either. Because I had not had any contact about a Zoom meeting. And I don't think Shelley has either. So I don't know where that came from.
Okay, well, then we come to this next meeting.
Yes.
And it's on the agenda that you're going to have a conversation about it.
The one that I.
I understand that. To have a conversation, there has to be a document. There has to be a presentation. There has to be. We are not going to vote on our budget. It's going to be presented to us. But it's going to be presented to us. And so if the budget was not acceptable because it had to be cut fifty thousand dollars, which is a twenty percent of this library budget. Or Solon is going to pay more money, there has to be some mechanism to make that happen. That's, and you're, you're within a month of having to send this. And nothing's happening.
Nothing's happening. I talked to you Wednesday. I assured you we were not, well, I don't know. I was not talking about getting rid of Kami. I think she's a wonderful person. I also talked to you and I thought you and I came to an agreement. We haven't done anything because I get this from him.
I said, I said, I was deeply concerned that you're then going to hold a special meeting without having other people, Karen just resigned. And without having other people that can come. I said, what you need to do if you're going to have a special meeting is you need to contact all the people on the board.
We didn't have any special meeting.
You, you have a special meeting posted for tomorrow.
That's correct.
The board does. I do not.
Well, you're on the board.
Yes, but it's been.
The city has not relieved her of her duties.
Right.
On responsibilities. So she can't attend that meeting and vote.
Okay, right. And you didn't.
When you and I talked, you told me not to go to the meeting.
I said, you should not go to a meeting unless, unless we're a special meeting. Unless you have talked to the other board members and know that they can attend.
Told me not to go to tomorrow's board meeting.
If you have not.
You didn't say if.
I said you needed to. I told her when we held a special meeting for this, how did we do it?
We contacted each other.
And say, does this time work for you? Can you do this? What time works for you? Do you have, does this day work for you? It isn't posted and then you say you have to show up. I said, you need to get ahold of your other people and see when they're available. Is that?
But, but they had the meeting scheduled whether I approved it or not. I, I didn't know.
See, that's the problem.
I shouldn't attend until you called me and said.
And I said, you need to talk to Heidi and Mark and you need to see, can they attend this meeting?
Not to go.
Because Heidi couldn't go.
It's not because. You came out and told me not.
And I said, the concern was that if we didn't have a full board there, that there are people who are trying to fire Kami.
But there was, not that I'm aware of. I mean, if there is, I have, nobody's talked to me about it.
It would have been on the agenda.
And I would not vote to fire.
I know you wouldn't, but if it's you and three other people that are not from Cedar Springs, they cannot vote you.
As far as I know, there's no one on the board that does not like Kami and doesn't think she's doing a good job. But that's just what I know.
There's a lot of emails flying out there.
And I'm not getting them.
Meta Mayor.
I'm not getting them either.
I also have knowledge that the library director fears that she will be fired by the Solon Township representatives of the library board. I'm also aware that she was directed to remove fifty thousand dollars from the budget.
We talked about her moving in about that. That's why we were going through line by line. But besides the fifty thousand, we also were talking to Bob about adding, so we wouldn't have to take the fifty thousand out.
Does she have any control over that?
No.
And Meta Mayor?
The board.
Um, I'm likewise aware that you can add money to a budget. And so I did ask the library director if that was under consideration from Solon Township. And I was told that she was not aware of any considerations.
It wasn't presented to me that way. I, was it presented in the finance committee meeting? It was apparently not a finance committee meeting. With Darla and.
I don't understand what I have to do with this. I don't understand why you're accusing me. Because it's, I've only done what I was told to do.
That, that's kind of the problem. You're being told what to do.
No.
You're telling me what to do. They're telling me what, I'm only being told what.
I told you to work with your other colleagues and when they're available.
And we are going to. And we planned on it.
But they're not available tomorrow.
I understand that.
So you, you didn't work with them and when they would be available for a special meeting?
Meta Mayor.
I actually did.
Obviously, none of them worked together at all.
Right.
Say that she wasn't working with them. Who else is working?
I don't have any control over the other people.
Wait a minute, okay. There's obviously a communication problem here that some people need to work on. This is not solving the thing. By removing a valuable person from a board because they're confused on what's happening. It sounds like the entirety of the board needs to get their stuff together and eliminate these difficulties.
Mr. Gross, you meant the library board, correct?
The board. I didn't say this board. I said the board, their library board, yes. If that needs to be clarified.
And I did talk to Heidi and Mark Friday and they did explain to me why they can't come tomorrow. So I have reached out and talked to them.
After the meeting was scheduled.
I had no control over when the meeting was scheduled. That was scheduled.
See, you, you do.
No, she doesn't.
You do.
It's one piece.
Right.
One piece. It's the board.
They ask you if I'm available.
So the no control is.
Secretary.
Did you, did you say to any of the other people, our other people can't come?
She doesn't have to.
I found out later.
You're asking her questions.
Yes, I'm asking her questions.
She doesn't have the authority to do that.
She, she does.
I did find out that they weren't coming, but that was after the meeting was scheduled. I don't know what you want me to say.
I, we need a person on this board who is going to work collectively with everyone else.
And that's what I have always done.
She has.
Ma'am, this is not public comment time. Sir, this is not public comment time. Sir, this is not public comment time.
Mary Evelyn, I don't think that you are doing anything purposefully.
If you knew Kami and Shelley and I had a meeting every other Tuesday, we have to post it and fight you.
Oh.
I do so that Shelley and I can learn more about the board. And that's what we've been doing. Every second Tuesday, every other Tuesday.
Every other Tuesday you've been having a meeting?
Yes, with Kami.
So you had a meeting last.
Didn't post it. It's just the three of us that's down.
I, I don't, I would advocate you don't have to post it. That would be Mr. Owens that's advocating that. So was this.
My laws advocating that. And the open the meeting.
Okay. At those meetings, did you come up with a budget?
No, we are learning more about the board and how to run it.
But you're the finance committee.
I am on the finance committee.
Is this the finance committee that's meeting?
No.
Oh, then I'm, I'm confused. Okay, so what is.
Know that I am learning more about how to run.
I think I have enough information to vote.
Okay, personally.
I would agree.
I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
Molly had to leave. Okay, um, I would like to clarify before we vote that this is not about whether or not we think you're a good person. This is not about whether or not we think that you are trying to harm the library. That this is about whether or not you are fulfilling your duty in this role of functioning as a library board person that I'm sorry. That is showing up and doing the work and the business of the library as it needs to be done to support the library and the library director.
I have supported her and the board one hundred percent since I became on the board. I have never wavered from supporting them.
No, won't you for that? Meta Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing.
Okay, sir, second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on.
And we have those documents that I supplied to the board.
I think you got.
Made part of the record.
Are we good? All right. So we've closed the hearing. Do I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we bring this hearing to the point of a, a vote as to whether we are going to re, re, move her from her position on the board or not.
Okay.
So Meta Mayor, I understand that this is a misunderstood part of, you know, hearings. Sometimes a board will make a motion one way or the other to then enter into the discussion. Not necessarily because they support a motion or not, but because they want to get to the discussion portion of the motion.
Sure. Is that the motion you're making?
Reason for going into the motion because after we make the motion, have a second, then we go into discussion.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
That, that we go into discussion as to whether or not we're going to relieve Ms. Bu on her position on the library board.
A part. Okay, discussion. Would you like to start, Mr. Gross?
I think it's been discussed enough. I think there's a clear, in my opinion, a clear miscommunication not only from her, from possibly the rest of the board, whether it's dealing with the budget or some of the other activities and the meetings. I think we cannot hold one person responsible for what may be happening as a group and as a whole. Okay, I think they all need to have some more communication. Elementary procedure, whatever it is. Get it in line and get it done and do things correctly.
So.
Definitely the budget has to be done as soon as possible.
How would you propose that we support that for them?
They are a standalone. We can only, if they ask some direction, we could possibly give direction in the lines of the way that we function. And that's the only thing we can do. They are a standalone. They aren't part of us other than we can assign those members from the, the city that we want to be on the board. And that person comes through the mayor and a vote of the board. And that's the way it's got to be done. If it's not being handled that way, then they need to be working on what they're doing.
Okay.
Okay. That's, that's the way I feel. It needs to be done. If somebody else sees it differently, I would like to have them speak up and say it.
Okay. Who would like to go now?
I certainly agree with Jerry in that there is an extreme amount of lack of communication, which is unusual with so many people. And so many rules and regulations, but um I think Mary Evelyn has done the best she can with what she has and the guidance she has. And um it's, it's always really hard to figure out what is a meeting and I know more specifically about those things. But she's done a good job for all these many years. And I appreciate that. And I don't think this is the time to punish her.
Okay. Renee?
I agree with, with Alice and Mr. Gross. It's not about one person. There's just, it's the, the board and they all need to work together. Um, I think there's a lot of things that slid through the cracks, um, a lot of hearsay. And um, I just don't think that, that you should be let go for that.
Lisa?
I um, just want all of the boards and everything in, in the city to work together. And you know, talking about politics, there's politics on any, any board, any committee. Um, it goes both ways. There's a lot of politics going on both ways. Some people hear one way, some people hear the other. I just want her to be able to make up her own mind and, and vote the way she wants to vote for the community and not be led by one person or another. Um, and I'm hoping that this has opened her eyes that she um, well, she's, it sounds like she's trying to, to get information. But we need to get information from more than one person. And um sorry it came to this, um but, and I'm just hoping that the board can com- communicate better and really realize what the rules are for um, how to run the board. Um I have a lot of thoughts. So the library board seems to be a bit of a mess. Um, no one seems to be communicating well. Everyone's confused on who can do the meetings and who can't do the meetings, which I think is not good, obviously. Like, half of the board thinks that there was a finance meeting and half the board thinks there wasn't. That's a problem. Uh, we're not at the deadline yet for the twenty-third, so I think that needs to be noted. Um and I agree with Ms. Atchison. I want to make sure that you have a voice on the board. Um I'm, I'm honestly a little bit concerned with how uh, Mr. Owens was acting when you were trying to talk. Um I don't know that it's me that you need to apologize to. I think you need to apologize to Ms. Evelyn, or Mary Evelyn, sorry. Um she came here today to say her piece and wasn't allowed to because somebody else on the board was telling her not to. That's a concern. And I think that's why um, members of the board are concerned, our board and personally. Uh, that's not good. She needs to be able to have her own opinion, just as I have my own opinion. I come to these board meetings and I say exactly what I think. I go onto Facebook and I email people and I talk to people and I have no problems about that. If you disagree with me, that's totally fine, I'll have a discussion. But I'm, I'm confident and sound in my opinion. And that's what I want for her, for representing the city of Cedar Springs on the library board. She deserves that. So, I hope that everyone on the board is listening. That we want her voice heard. She got appointed by this board, not by me, but this board, so that she can contribute to the library board. That's important. We don't need a board of one or two or three. We need seven people to be able to argue and dissent and be critical. How many times have we been critical of each other? That's good. That is so good. I adore when you guys come in here, I mean, I don't adore when you yell at me, but I do adore when you guys come in here and say, hey, I disagree with this. I'm always asking on Facebook, please tell me, please tell me. I can't help uh, give my opinion if I have none from the city. If it's just only me. I, I try to do well with that, but I want you guys to be able to come and tell me. And that's what we want with Mary Evelyn, Ms. Mary Evelyn, sorry, I'm so sorry. So, that is, that's my opinion. Everybody on the board needs to, you guys need to get it together. Because whether we go to KDL or have our own library, this board is a wreck, you guys. This should not be happening. And we should be a community coming together. It's a library, you guys. A place where we can all go together. Whether it's KDL, honestly, I would love for it to be KDL. I want the electronic stuff, whatever, I think it brings up a lot of stuff. However, ruining the, the whole community is not worth it for me at all for a library, at all. So, I hope that everyone can be kind and dissent and argue and give your cri- criticisms, all that stuff. I love it. And I'm glad that you guys are also here and passionate about all the stuff, which is awesome. Um, but we need, we need your voice. You represent the city of Cedar Springs. Just as I do. That's all. Sure. One more thing, um, this board is not Pam's board. She's the mayor, but it's not her board. It's our board. She gives us direction maybe, but we decide if we like that direction or not. She chairs us. She chairs the meeting. She doesn't, she doesn't tell me how to vote. She didn't tell Ashley how to vote. We might have a discussion because that's what we're supposed to do, but we don't tell each other how to vote. And even if there's one person voting opposite of us, we cheer them on. Because they stood up for their values and they stood up for their community, because that's what they thought the community wanted. So it's not one person's board. It's everybody's board in the community. So, all of the people need to remember that.
Anybody else? Okay. And Mary Evelyn, I think you are probably receiving the greatest criticism in this because I don't have the ability to remove Mr. Owens. Or to recommend that we have a conversation about removing Mr. Owens, because he's not my appointment. But what I have is, um, now the director and three members, one who's now not a member, who's resigned, who I did not make resign, who has a host of medical issues happening, and I have said, we'll take you off briefly and bring you back on if that's what works. And I'm here to help you with how to chair a meeting. I'm here with how to get you the structure. And I'm then being pushed back with people coming and saying to me, I'm not allowed to put anything on the agenda. There's no discussion item. We're not allowed to have discussion items. We're not, and I say what you have to do is get your folks and say, we're gonna put this on the agenda. But that requires all four of you from Cedar Springs unless Shelley, unless is going to allow that to happen. So, I don't know how to make your board function if we don't have people who know how to make a board function. And I don't think you're intentionally misdirecting. I don't think you're intentionally um, refusing to have conversations about things like the budget. But those conversations aren't happening. And I don't have a position on how this budget line by line, but I have a position that there has to be a budget. And it has to come to, and when Mr. Owens says it takes however long it takes, no. No, it doesn't. Like, we have-
Shh, let her talk, please. It's her comment.
Okay. Can you talk to me about your conversation with Ms. Falcon?
Um, so, I, I don't remember specific, you know, I do dozens of things a day.
Right.
Remember specifics. Um, of course, I agree with Madam Mayor, the budgets have to be completed.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but, you know, I don't think this is an issue about the budget. I don't think this is an issue about missing a meeting because somebody errantly told her not to come to a meeting.
Right.
Uh, I, you know, of course, I have my own opinions and this is my opinion. I agree with uh, Ms. Atchison, Ms. Hamel. I think the library board is a train wreck.
Yes.
And I don't think, and again, this is my opinion, I don't get a vote here. I think Ms. Vu has been led astray. I think she's done some things that are wrong, clearly. But I don't think she's doing these things intentionally. I think she's being told what to do. I think she's being told inappropriate laws, inappropriate bylaws. I think their meetings are being run contrary to their bylaws. I think their meetings are being run contrary to a proper parliamentary procedure. And I think that this crowd should go to the library board meetings and tell the library board meetings how they should be run. Because this library board is dysfunctional. And I don't think Ms. Vu is the symptom, or I don't think she-
Pause.
Pause, thank you. I think she's the symptom of having a leadership on that board who doesn't know what they're doing. And I think that's at least partially what, you know, and I understand she's kind of a lightning rod here. She's in the unfortunate position of being, uh, doing some of these things that are wrong. But I think she's the one being told what to do wrong by other people who don't understand their own bylaws. They don't understand Robert's Rules of Order. They don't understa- understand state law. And they can stand up at the podium all day long and say, Madam Mayor, this is the way it is. It doesn't make it fact.
Right.
Now, I put a ton of research into this, you know, Madam Mayor, you attend all these meetings. Uh-
I've been at every library board meeting.
Don't know any other way for me to put it, other than I think Ms. Vu has done some things that are wrong. I don't know if that's sufficient reason to remove her from the board. Um, but I think the library board needs to get itself put together and function in a way to run the library uh, for the community, for the best of the community, and they're simply not doing that.
I agree.
Madam Mayor?
Mm-hmm.
Can we get to a vote?
Sure. I have just a few more pieces that I need to, I need to have in this discussion. Because the reason we're having this is because I agree with the city manager. The library board is a train wreck. I'm at lots of your meetings. I'm at every meeting for a year. And it's regularly a train wreck. This issue of we can't put a thing on the agenda because there's no discussion items. I don't know in what world that's a thing. I don't know, we do a budget when we feel like doing a budget. I don't know in what world that's a thing. I mean, I, I understand if you don't, you haven't been taught that these are the things that you need to do. And that as Kami is going, and I don't mean teach in a pejorative way. I mean, this is hard stuff. We're gonna have an entire extra meeting where Darla is going to present a budget to us for a couple of hours. Right? Two hours, but I mean, even-
Two meetings.
Two meetings, well, but just the first presenting, right? And then we go through the whole like how to, we don't just say, this isn't okay, we're gonna cut fifty thousand dollars or somebody has to add some money. Like, that's, that's, that's not how you run a railroad. It's just not. And I, I understand that you don't understand that. Because it's complicated. And it's not what you thought you were signing up for. You're appointed. The council. I understand, Ms. Booth, that it's not what you thought you were signing up for. I've had several other board members tell me that they did not understand that they were going to be told that this is-
Sorry, this is not a public comment time, thank you.
Let's, let's just have the vote, please.
Okay, I'm just trying to say, I'm sorry. Again, I'm sorry that they're doing this to you.
And this is not a public comment time, thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Vu, you've provided tremendous service to the library board. You have worked diligently. And it's a really hard job that I think you're not being given very good leadership for in the rest of the board, and I'm sorry for that. And I don't know, I don't know how to provide that for you in this context. When we bring new people onto our board, we provide that structure. And I understand that um, Kami's trying to do that for you and Shelley, but there isn't, other board members should be doing that for you. And I'm sorry that they're not.
Madam Mayor, I hate to disrupt you, or just, you know, uh, let's bring it to a vote.
Okay.
All of our comments can be made as public comments at the end.
Sure.
We normally do. Otherwise, it just sounds like more lecturing.
I just feel like we've put you in a difficult position.
Excuse me, this is not a public comment time, thank you.
I just feel like we've put you in a, a difficult position by asking you to exercise skills that you may not have.
Is not a public-
That would be amazing.
Madam Mayor.
This is not a public comment.
We just vote.
Where?
Sure.
He's already done it, she won't listen to him. He's asked her three times to bring it to a vote.
Sir. Please.
She won't shut up either.
Could you please?
Obviously not.
She's on the board. She is allowed to speak. Thank you.
I've made my comment.
Sure.
Let's bring it to the vote.
Okay.
Let's come up with a determination.
Sure. So.
In a public hearing.
Do you want me to?
I'd like to make a motion that we bring this item to a vote.
Second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Hey.
So, Madam Mayor, just a point of clarification, um, there is a motion in your agenda. I mean, you don't have to actually make a motion. You guys can-
You're talking about for Ms. Ringler?
Um, no, sorry, under for a, I-
Oh, yes, a motion to remove Mary Evelyn Vu.
So that is a proposed motion, you know, not from me personally, but from the office. And you don't have to make a motion if you don't want to, but you could also make an alternative motion. So, Mr. Gross, you've called for a question, but I'm sure that my clerk would say, I don't have a motion. So, do you have a-
Well, it's, well, it's based on the motion to remove. Okay, let's have a vote on.
Okay, so are you making a motion to remove?
No, I'm saying we're having a-
A vote on the-
We're having a vote on the removal of.
There, there has to be a vote. There has to be a mo- Ms. Madam clerk?
Please make it. Exactly, that would be- That's correct. That's correct.
Yeah, yeah.
That's correct.
Okay, but you're making that motion-
So that we can vote.
Yes.
So that we can vote.
Yes.
Okay, so that is the motion and you are making it.
Yes.
Is there a second?
I'll say, okay. Sorry, go ahead.
I'll second that motion.
Start with them, okay. Mr. Gross?
No.
Okay, Ms. Atchison?
Or-
I'm sorry.
No.
I'm over here with Ms. Atchison. I'm sorry, and I'm looking at Mrs. Race.
Okay, no.
Ms. Race. Okay, Ms. Hamel, no. Okay, Ms. Powell?
No.
And Ms. Atchison?
No.
And the mayor votes no.
And a mayor, would you like to take a short vote for recess?
Well, do we need, do we need a motion to accept this Ringler's resignation?
Do, but I didn't know if the crowd wanted to stick around for that. Uh, we can do it real quick.
Okay, I'll make the motion to accept the resignation.
The vote was, the vote was seven zero. It failed. The motion failed. Six zero, sorry, Mrs.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion, if it's okay, to accept the resignation of Karen Ringler from the library board and thank her for her service.
Support. Any discussion? I would just like to say, because there was some really ugly things said about Karen tonight that I-
Really?
Appreciate.
Oh.
That she was leaving because she was told she had to.
Oh.
That she, Karen continued to try to serve when her husband was in the hospital. When, when she was having- But it was very difficult for her.
Yes.
She continued to come and show up to meetings.
Did.
And even now would like to continue to serve.
She can come back sometime.
And what I have told her is, what I have told her is, is that we can find someone to fill in for her for a period of time.
Mm-hmm.
And then she can come back.
Yes.
When things in her family are medically better.
Yes.
So, I would like to make it really clear that her service was important and valuable.
Mm-hmm.
And that she is trying to make a decision that felt hard for her.
Yes.
To support her family.
Yes.
Yeah.
Gotta do it.
Madam Mayor, you can take a voice vote, I guess.
Hey, all in favor of accepting her resignation?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so then moving on to communications.
You simply uh, put it, the public notice to ensure that we did things legally and correctly, that not all boards do.
Yeah, we could have, you know, had some backdoor conversation and-
Alright, what else?
Council comments.
Starting with me?
Sure.
I appreciate this board and um, we worked this out and I've always, from the day I got on this council, realized that we have serious lack of communication between other boards. And that's kinda why I go to find out what are they talking about? What's real and what is, you know, coffee shop gossip? So, it happens and I've seen it many, many times, so just be aware, we, of going for the facts and looking under the, the tablecloth or whatever and see what really happened, or go to the meetings. And everybody here, please attend our library meetings. They're, they're nice people. It's very educational and um, it's really fun. So, I have a fun, a good time at all these meetings that I go to and I meet people and see- So I have a fun, a good time at all these meetings that I go to and I meet people and see people. So like come to this meeting, come to planning commission, come to DDA, library, uh, school board. Go to them if you have time. It's very important to your community to know what's going on. Thank you, everybody.
Um, I just wanna, um, make clear that, um, with the library, we love the library. I love the library. I have no idea what, you know, what we should do to, to make the library better, to support the library, um, you know, to make sure that everybody has, uh, the opportunity to use our library, um. It's not, i- it's gray again. You know, we need to remember that life is not black or white. It is gray. I mean, it's not gonna be KDL or Algoma or it's, there's so many different things that could happen to make our, and we have to look at all the facts, just like Donna said tonight, you know? There are so many things that could happen if we make one choice and so many things that could happen if we make another choice. So, I mean, we haven't even, even dug into that yet. That's, I mean, we're still fact finding. None of us know well what, you know, and, and that's not nece- necessarily our, it's not our decision. It's gonna be the community's decision, whether or not they want it, if that's even put on the ballot. Um, I think that people are reading into some of the things that they think we're doing and it's, it, and that doesn't have anything to do with anything. It, you know, and so just be patient. Um, let us know how you're feeling. We want to know. We want to have, you know, comments. We want to have, you know, people contact us. We want to know what's going on and what you're feeling. Just be careful what you're, you know, like she says, a rumor mill. You don't know what's right, what's wrong. We don't, you don't know, you know? And that's what we have to do on this board is we have to try to sift through it all and find the facts. So, but I love this community. We love our library. We all do. You know, none of us want anything bad for the library. We love it.
Gross?
I'm disappointed in that through confusion, the fine lady went through what she went through today.
Yes.
Okay. I still state, there was a lot of badgering going on. It wasn't straight to the point, talking to the point and getting the answer. I think we as a board could work on that also. And I think it needs to be done. But I am truly, I am truly hoping that things run a little bit better through the library board, not saying that it hasn't been functional. But communication and so forth is an utmost responsibility of the entirety of that group, so everybody knows what's going on.
Yes.
And the direction to go with it.
Absolutely.
I do thank the people that came out and had comments to say. Whether we were being blamed as a board as a whole, or we weren't, and we were, okay? Uh, it was something that had to be addressed. Okay? I'm glad you came out. Uh, I don't know how many were village or, or the city or not. I know a lot of it was township. Uh, and that's fine. We just need to have input a lot of times to help direct. Thank you for coming.
Ms. Race.
Uh, short and sweet. We appreciate all of you guys coming to communicate, uh, with us. We have always wanted that. Um, I, I see a lot of things on Facebook and it makes me sad because it's spread all over the place and a lot of it's not true. And, you know, we are always, you can reach out to us, the city manager. Um, but there's so many things that, um, it just makes me sad because being at a council, you know, we volunteer our time to do this. And, you know, we live in the city. We all live in the city. This is all for all of us, and that's why we did this. I didn't go to school for ten years to figure out all these laws. I have, you know, I have people that I can trust that can tell me what needs where, what, what I should know, but it doesn't deter me from what I believe. And I just want, I just want that, I want we all work very well together and I want that to be the same with all boards. We want to make sure everything is good for the city. Um, what you hear is not always true. So please reach out. It's easy to go on your little phone and say, I can't believe this happened. And I've heard it from people that are in this audience right now. So I just, if you, if you have questions, please reach out to us. Um, but I do appreciate you guys coming in and, uh, so I have.
Ms. Hamel.
Um, I did hear people saying, why do we even have this hearing at the end? And I will say for me, I'm here because I had no idea what I was going to do when I sat down here. And I listened to everybody and I read the memo and all of this stuff. So that's the reason why we had the hearing. Otherwise, I just would have made a decision based on the very little information I had before this meeting. So for the record, that's why we did this. So it's not like to throw somebody under the bus publicly and to like have a great time. This was very stressful and I've already had a day. So I'd like so I also want to again reiterate that anybody can contact me if you have any questions about anything. I have said publicly many times, I have no idea. I have no idea. I'll find out, or I'm not sure. This is what this person said. That's all I got for you. So I will tell you if I don't know, I will find the answer if I can. Just reach out to get more information. We all need to be doing that.
Thank you. And I would like to say, and, and you know, please recall me. That would be amazing. And I don't have to do this. I mean, I, I taught today. I did parent teacher conferences and I came here. I did this because I have people reaching out to me from the library on the regular saying, this isn't working. I can't get anything put on the agenda. I can't have a discussion item. We can't even have a conversation about this. They, I asked, I'm like, you talk to the chair. The chair won't put it on. I have to give it to this Kami at our meeting for city council. I said, you can put this on the agenda. I can't. I'm not allowed. Okay, that's a problem. That's a problem. And I don't have any authority over you. There is no world where somebody on this board would say to me, I'd like to put something on.
This is not a public comment. Thank you. And you are.
There is. I will have you removed.
Not at this meeting. Thank you.
There is no world where I would have one of the people on this board, or the manager, or the clerk, or the finance director, say to me, there's a thing we need to put on the agenda. And I would say, no. That's not how that works. And this idea that the chair can simply cancel a meeting or can simply schedule a meeting, when we were talking about this. Does Tuesday work? What time can someone be there? How late we have, we're up against a planning commission meeting? All of this. And we if people can't come, we don't hold it then. I don't know how to fix that for the library board.
It is not for your city council to fix. The library board is their thing.
And this is not a public comment.
I don't care anymore. Every time I hear you say something about this, it has come from Kami's mouth. Every negativity, every issue that you're talking about tonight has come from Kami. And she's not here to say anything. We need to put these out. And this is very frustrating that I keep hearing this from, from both you two. You know?
Hey, we're adjourned. We're adjourned.